All right, it is 6:30. We will call our March 15th, 2021 Little Falls Special Work Session City Council Meeting to Order. Our public forum is still temporarily suspended. Bill discussion, does anyone have any questions with the bills?
No, Mr. President, other than just to advise that if you have a question on the bill and you email, you get a prompt answer on your question.
That works. Thank you. Any consent agenda item discussion? There's no questions with the consent agenda. Council information only items. First, strategic planning retreat, date, location, and facilitator. John?
Thank you, Council President. The location is pretty well simple. I checked with the Initiative Foundation. They didn't have any plans on opening anything until after May. So I checked with the county. They have dates available at the end of April, and those are... Second, the 29th and 30th, the 5th, 6th, and 7th of May, and then they did have the week before as well, I think. And the 13th and 14th of May.
One more time, John, please.
So the Thursday and Friday, the 29th and 30th of April. The either Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of May, the 5th through the 7th, and the 13th or 14th of February, or excuse me, of May, it should be Thursday, Friday as well.
Just looking quick, I'm working both, that's my weekend to work the 29th and 30th. Not that I can't find somebody to work for me, but others would work better. The 13th and 14th would only be one day I have to find a relief person for. Or the 5th, 6th, and 7th, would that be morning, be evening?
I would think one of the days planned for an all-day, we have, we could, we could book the room from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And then the second day, I would expect it to be a half-day planned for morning.
Since my work is seasonal, I generally book Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Wednesday, Thursday, at least I could get work in Friday.
I should be good with any of them.
Yeah, 29th and 30th, I'll be at a DAV conference in up in Breezy Point.
Try for the Wednesday, Thursday, Brad?
I'd need to find somebody to work for me all three days. Well, Wednesday, Thursday, meaning which one?
That would be the 5th and 6th of May.
Let me find May again.
I'm good whenever just, when we decide, just if I have enough advanced warning.
The 6th, I'm off in the morning, so that would work. I could find somebody probably to work for me on the 5th.
Okay.
Works for me.
Okay.
They all work for me.
All right, I'll work on reserving those dates. Did anybody have anything with the facilitator documents or presentation, any other questions that came up that you didn't find in the, want to discuss now?
What did we land on for dates, so I can make sure that gets on my calendar?
May 5th and 6th, because then that would, you'd have to just find the whole day off, and then you'd have the morning already scheduled out for the 6th.
Yeah, I don't want to cut one on the, on the 7th, on the 6th.
Avoid a weekend and Friday for Raquel.
Eight to four thirty on Wednesday, and just the morning.
I didn't see anything with the facilitator. I thought I, that would be up to you.
What were the hours on the 5th? That's our anniversary, but if I got the evening, we can do something.
That we can book the county boardroom from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30.
On the 5th.
On the 5th, yeah.
Anything else dealing with that? Item B, tax increment financing district, community asset development group, Council Member Goschik.
Yes, uh, my views hasn't been changed, but I've had so many people contact me wondering why we wouldn't allow at least a public hearing so they'd have their input. And I felt there was enough people that contacted me that I think I'm willing to vote to go ahead on a, on having that public hearing, because it's important. We do hear from the people, the community, you know, and their thoughts on it. So that's why I brought it up again. Usually I don't, on stuff like this, once I make up my mind. But I guess the circumstances, I came up, and I want to resubmit that, you know, because it has to come from one of the people that opposed having it, and I felt like I would do that, so.
And we, we do have, again, Bob and Mike from CADG. I know, I heard in that meantime, from our last meeting, that there were some questions that felt like they weren't answered. And I'm happy to have them here to address any of that, any of those questions that you have on the project and how the process would go through, and what more information that we can develop. Lori and I had met with the county this morning to talk about that valuation of, of their tax valuation, so we can certainly answer some more questions to that. And we have done a lot in terms of researching all of the historical TIF districts that we've had, gathered information around the dollar amount of, of actual TIF revenue that has come up. And then I would say there's another piece of information that we got. We were with Barrett Pet Food Innovations last week. Their president, her owner, Sarah Barrett, discussed that they have a growing need for workforce because they're from, working on expansion. That's why Carol's on tonight to discuss some of that. And with one of their needs that they expressed with that expansion is a need for housing for their employees. So that's, you know, relatively some new information that we've just been, been given. So with that, I, you know, open to any other questions that we have at this time to discuss that, any other answers that you, you have, we can certainly try to provide those.
John, I, I sent a list of questions I had, and Lori had sent me some of the answers. And what, the questions were not only for me, but what council members had asked previously, and I don't think we had complete answers, or so if, I would like to have you go at least through a couple of those, because I think they're appropriate.
Mr. President, I'm not sure, but there, there's going to have to be a motion to reconsider in a second and a vote on that to open, open this back up for discussion. I don't believe that's happened yet, has it?
This is, Jim, this is the work session, so we do work freely with, with items here, because we're not actually taking a vote on them. So these are items that we're discussing, and Frank asked that we reconsider it, so I, this is the time now to address some other concerns, so that we can use our time in the meeting as efficiently as possible. So if there's, there are some issues and questions, we certainly can answer them.
And I'd like to clarify, I never spoke to anyone who voted for it last time. I didn't speak to John about it. This is something I brought up on my own.
And, and that's fine. I was just looking for a point of order, and, and it's been explained that this is a work session, we're not voting, so, but before we can really take any action on it, when it does come to time, I just want it be known that there's going to have to be a motion to reconsider with a second, and then...
And that's for...
Yeah, that's old business, item 8A on the regular agenda. I, I, I have not changed my view on this as of right now. I'm okay with moving forward to a public hearing. This will be the second time on this issue that I am not going to be taking action that I want to because of an absence. And I'm going to say right now, the next, the next vote on this, to move forward with the project or not, if somebody's gone, I'm voting my conscience. And if everybody's not here, that isn't my problem.
Mr. President, just, just to be clear on my position on this, I'm not against the project, okay? I, I've talked to people, I've talked with people that, that have rental and rental browsing projects. They do say that there is a need, I understand that. I have no problem with the dollar for the property. I can explain that to the people of Little Falls. The problem I have is the feeling that this is getting rushed down our throats, where we don't get an input on, on what we really want, how to negotiate through this process. So my question is, once, if we go with the hearing, public hearing, are we going to be locked into that 1.1 million at, at, for 25 years and 90% of that tax, that increment financing? We're not going to be locked in.
No, go ahead, Lori.
If I can just explain, so the purpose of the public hearing, of the council calling for the public hearing, is from the time we call the public hearing until we have the public hearing, is the time in which we work with the developers to come up with the dollar amount, the number of years it's going to take to pay that back, and all that specific information. So we actually do a development agreement with them that we would, would discuss at the public hearing, so that you will have as a council more pertinent information to make your decision, okay? Now, I will tell you, and based on some information that I've been able to gather since last week, we have in total done 10 housing districts and four senior housing districts. So we've done 14 housing districts, TIF districts, in the last 30 years. So this isn't something new, we've done several of them. Of those districts, 12 of the agreements were set to be 25 years, because that's the statutory duration. So we can, we, when we set that in our development agreement, 25 years, or up until the maximum amount that they can receive is paid. So even though we had 12 districts set at 25 years, only three of them went 25 years. So the others, one went 19 years, one went 15 years, and, you know, down from there. We had two districts go 15 years, two that went 14, one that went 12, one that went nine, one that went six, and we have three districts that are still active. So just because we say 25 years, they aren't guaranteed 25 years of increment. If it's a million dollars, it's until that million dollars is paid to them.
But that, that's, that's, that's my biggest one, is the 1.1 million, and, and I, I, I'm still having an issue with that, with that 1.1 million dollar mark, the cap at that 1.1 million, and the way it's, way it's figured, and, and it's still, is that 100% of the figure, the cap that they come up with? Because I know a lot of, with some people that I've talked to that have done TIF financing, generally it's usually a one-third to two-thirds split on that, on that amount of what it costs. And a lot of ti, now, a lot of times, with the people that I talked to, that was more with a city project such as a road, or utilities and stuff going into that area where they were going to be building. And that's where they were working their, 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 their tax increment financing off of, not off of the actual building itself.
So with the, the districts that we've done, so if it's a two-thirds, one-third split, they're talking about special assessments, not tax increment. So tax increment is what's on the ground or in the ground, is typically what we fund. And we would determine what that dollar amount is, set that in the development agreement, and then that's the amount that they would get.
And they would collect what, and they can only capture certain things of their, of their increments. So one of the items that Lori identified in her research were that we're actually collecting about, we're only collecting about 55% of the total taxes paid, even in, even when, even on the TIFs, on the current TIF districts that we have. So they may have more eligible expenses, or they, maybe they were eligible for certain capturing of TIF, but not all of that gets through. Not everything that you can set in a TIF district gets through. There's, there's school referendum dollars don't get through. There are portions that are paid above and beyond. As the tax rate increases, none of that is captured. So if our tax rate went from 50% to 60% in the life of the TIF, they're only capturing the, the increment increase, so the valuation increase, at 50% tax rate. Everything above and beyond that, for what we would need to balance our budgets, that, that dollar amount, that comes back to us, or back to the other taxing jurisdictions if their rate increases. So not everything for the entire perpetuity of the TIF is, is captured and reimbursed back to the, the developer in the TIF agreement. It's only for the eligible expenses that we established within the development agreement, and they have to prove that those expenses were there. They have to show that those expenses actually took place, and that we would, we would be able to reimburse them. So the, the dollar amount that they're, they're looking for, and, and this is where I think Bob and Mike, if you had input to this, is what they need to balance and fill the gap between what they can acquire in financing guarantees through the USDA financing program that they're utilizing, which is a 40-year program at a 3.7% interest rate right now, which is one of the reasons they're even at the table able to do this, because now that's eligible to us. The amount that they have from investors willing to put into this project, because that USDA amount isn't going to cover everything, and the difference between the, that and the construction costs. So that's what they're looking for in TIF, for the eligible expenses that TIF can be, that, that TIF can pay for, which we're going to establish in the development agreement, and then for the dollar amount that's at, at its cap, and the length of time. So whatever one of those gets hit first, if it's, they pay their, their TIF, the dollars that get captured, get captured, and they get to 1.1 before the 25-year number is up, or 25 years to however many dollars were captured. And the way we'd want to structure this agreement with them, and I've had this conversation with them, and said that this needs to be a pay-as-you-go TIF. So we're only going to give them back money as their taxes are paid. We are not going to loan them, borrow them money for anything related to this project in advance, and then capture the proceeds from the TIF ourselves to pay back the, the amount that we're borrowing. We are only do it as a pay-as-you-go. So the, the, the bottom line is, is that 1.1 million dollars, based on that information that they shared with me in, in, in our conversations, is about the, the dollar amount that they could have, and that was equivalent to, as well, for Jason Murray, when he used their plans and developments, and the conversation that we had with the county in terms of how much would this value for at the start for their tax purposes. Because that's going to be a huge determining factor as well, into how much TIF is, could be generated over 25 years or the life of the district. And our conversation with the county, where their 2.9 million dollar number that you saw was very low. It was actually prior to their finalization of the, of the total market valuations that they had for the city, or for the whole county, which is about 5% across the board higher than for everything. So that number would even come up just based on that calculation. And they are aware, and this was the discussion we had this morning, they are aware that their valuations on apartments are very low because they don't have comprehensive sales, or they don't have comparative sales, to evaluate what those apartment values could be for tax purposes. They just have three of them that are in their works calculating, and they shared with us that that will lead apartments to be valued at a much higher rate. So, and they're, don't want to speak for them, but it's projecting that this is going to be a continuing trend for years to come. So the situation that we're in right now, if we value, if, if we work with the development agreement and say today's valuation estimate is going to be what we're going to work with for the entire 25 years, is as that valuation goes up, the TIF gets paid back faster, because that's just more increment that they're paying. It's, it's the increment that's being captured. It's the difference between today and the valuation after the project's done. So if that goes from 3 million to 4 million, or 5 million, well, the TIF gets just paid back that much faster. That's why you've heard from Lori that we've had TIF districts in the past that have paid back faster than what they originally scheduled to be. And based on the conversation with the county, at least in the near term, and I say near term, I mean five years, projections for them, that apartments are going to go up based on just, just some of the evidence that they have right now. And after this is going to be built, they're going to evaluate it based on its actual physical construction. It's not going to be based on what's on paper and what their formulas are saying today, based on comp sales that they don't have within our company.
So I thought earlier, when I asked the question, that 1.1 million in the 25 years still isn't a set-in-stone number, where that's going to be negotiated through the public hearing process, right?
That can be negotiated prior to, we're going to want to negotiate with that, with them prior to the, the public hearing point. We're going to do that and, and put that in the plan and development agreement, which we're going to work on and have that available to us by the time we get to the public hearing, but probably in advance. And you're going to be a part of that process as well. It's not just going to be, oh, here's the, here's the number on the day of the public hearing and say, well, take it or leave it. We're going to, we're going to have that, and we're going to work out those details with them. And certainly going to discuss, based on the factors that we have and what we know of, where, what is the best fit? What is the lowest dollar amount of TIF and/or the lowest period of time in which we can make your project work? Because we, there's, there is that gap between what their investors could put in, what they can borrow, and what the construction cost is.
John, and I would make the point, they're not going to say, okay, what do you want, what do you want, what do you want? And they're not going to, you know, we may not agree on the length, the amount, the land, you know, they'll give us their best. We can ask for anything we want. We could say, no TIF, we're going to charge you full price, and that's the way it's going to be. Well, then we're not going to have a housing project. So it has to be a good deal for them, just like it has to be a good deal for us. Because you even alluded, Jim, the cost of materials, and to have that cost of materials and charge 11 or 1,200, that's, that's going to be a stretch for them, and that's why they're looking for some assistance. And, you know, we've talked to a lot of cities, and I hate to bring back the coalition, but it's one of their top three projects for the state of Minnesota is housing. And, and you said that, you've talked to people that have talked about it. And to me, it's more of what can we do to make this right, because we need it. And, and if it's a need, and when you hear about the Barrick project, that was very interesting to me, and the potential growth there, and other businesses, it's just, but I agree with you, there's, we need to know that before we're going to vote on the next, after tonight. We'll have, we'll need that information, because on the vote, if it passes tonight to go to the public hearing, then at the public hearing, we're going to have to know that, because otherwise we won't get votes. That's my understanding.
And now, that, that's my concern. I, I really, we, we need to be, because in 15, 20 years, how many of us are going to be still, still sitting here? And I don't want to have the next people coming in stuck with something that we end up approving, and they're the ones that have to eat everything on it, you know? So I want to make sure that we have, take a good act of participation in this, and kind of slow the whole process down a little bit, so we got time to, to get it to the best we can, where both sides are going to benefit from it.
And I understand that part, Jim, but those other 25-year TIFs, you know, they, they weren't worried about us. I'm, I'm not going to be here a lot longer, I'm pretty sure of that. I don't have children, so I don't have to worry about them, but I worry about our community. And if there's a need, I think it's up to us to fill it. And I know we've all heard the story, yeah, we could have had 3M, we could have had college, we could have had a technical school, and everybody's saying now, Little Falls is never going to be nothing, because we never want to do anything. Well, this is an opportunity in my mind. But I agree with you, we can't give away the farm to get the chickens.
Lori?
So another thing that might be helpful in, in your decision-making process, so I looked from 2020, payable 2020 property taxes, and John alluded to this. So in, in, we have six active TIF districts in 2020 that we were collecting increment on, okay? The total property taxes paid by those six businesses, or six TIF districts, was $358,000. That's what they paid in total taxes. Of that $358,000, 195 came back to the city in increment. The difference being $162,000. That was split between, or dispersed between the, the three taxing jurisdictions based on, based on levy. So when we talk about this TIF, these TIF districts, not all of the money is coming back to us in TIF. They are still paying various pieces of property taxes. So if not for those six TIF districts, there would be $162,000 that, that other taxpayers in our communities would be paying, that, that these districts are now picking up.
And we'd own the barren land.
And, and, right, and we would have bare land.
Well, I think it'd be worse than that. I mean, you know, fairness to my position. They wouldn't, it wouldn't be barren land, it'd be dilapidated buildings and barren land.
In some instances, yes.
In some instances, yes.
Yeah, I understand that, like the school, you know, school taxes or, they still have to pay them. The tax that we're only incrementing is the taxes that would come to the city itself.
No, that's not true.
There's, this is, in tax increment financing, if we follow the process and do everything, you know, the public hearings and the notification, proper notifications to the taxing jurisdictions, then they can capture taxes from all three, and the, even the others, the little others that, that you see on your property tax statement. They capture it from all of them, they just don't, it, not everything is captured. Not all of it is captured. It's only captured based on how much it's going at the tax rate that it started, how much the valuation increased, and what they're eligible for reimbursements for. So that, it's, that's, that's it. If that number doesn't get to be enough, then the, the business doesn't get it over the, the length of time that was set on the TIF district, or the property owner. They don't, they don't receive it, they don't get it all. But some of that gets through, and some of that goes to what Lori just explained. Those dollars that came in have reduced everybody's tax burden from, across all three of our taxing jurisdictions. There's 165,000... There's 165,000, was it?
162.
160, $162,000 that's going to every one of our parcels in within properties that are in TIF districts. So not everything gets captured. So it does reduce our property taxes even from the from the get-go. And we're recouping, we can recoup and cap or some of those costs, the 10% factor, we can take those and pay for the administration and other costs that we have in establishing the TIF district. So in the end, it's if if successful and everything works, it is the lowest, one of the lowest risk opportunities that we can put, we can create and incentivize and help to fill the gap and and create these and help these projects get off the ground. Because the bottom line of why we're here is we're trying to fit a piece into a puzzle and it's a very, there's a, there's a very specific piece and it has, you know, a little bit of room for wiggle, but not a lot. It is that piece to fill the gap between cost of construction, amount they can get financing for because they're using a very specific financing program through USDA that gives them access to a length of term that makes the project viable for them over the long term. And there are investors that they've identified and had interest in investing in this project and what they would be committed to putting in. If they have too much money from the investors, then the USDA programs don't work. If they have not enough, if you can't get the valuations to work on the on the USDA programs and they don't have, you know, the investors, then the program doesn't work. They have those pieces in place that they believe will be there. And now the last piece is figuring out what that TIF district number, that TIF number's going to be. And we still need to work on that with the county. We still need to work on that in terms of what's eligible and how we're going to to work that that out on the total dollar amount and the length of time in which that's that's going to, that can be, we can reasonably assume that that can be generated.
And to get all those numbers, we need to set a date for a public hearing or approve a public hearing to proceed forward to establish that, correct?
If we didn't do that, we wouldn't be moving forward gathering any more of that information because there's no, there's no reasonable conclusion for us to make that time investment of time and money even because we will have to work with bond council or a development agreement in establishing that. And that comes with with resources. We've had to work some with with Jason Murray, but that's a, you know, that that fortunately with our source law agreement gets, we only have to pay for half of that service cost. So that's why we we work with them. We were trying to do as much to get as much information to the table, but but the way the TIF process works is we need that 45 days in between calling the public hearing and 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 it actually taking place to to get a lot of that that final pieces done because they come with costs.
John, I think if we go back in time here, this could be a lot smoother if we have a lot of this information upfront. I go back to the genesis of this project. First I've heard of it was on your weekly update with the sketched-out plan. This is what we're looking at. It would have been nice to know prior to that because then this, among other things that have happened is, well, we find out about it, well, all the work's done. I mean, or a good chunk or a lot of work has been put into something before we even had to say, are we interested in proceeding with this? I mean, this should have come up in a work session a month after you were approached by the developers to ask, are we interested in doing this and let's talk about it? But no, it just went forward and on one of your weekly updates, boom, here it is. This is what we want to do.
Well, in defense, the one thing I would say, and I don't want to dwell on this, but I don't know how many have turned us down after about a month of the process. So, you know, we could have brought it to the table and discussed the whole thing late and I could have got shot down and that's why there is a long enough period at a time. And I think the reason I asked the questions I did of Lori and John is because I think we could have had more answers and we had, we could have had more to start with. And I was part of meetings with all the other developers and a couple of them, you just don't hear back from, but I understand what you're saying because then we're starving for information. And to be honest with you, and I mean this in the kindest way, I didn't think that this would turn into a huge debate only because of what I'm hearing all around this community and other communities. And I knew there may be a debate on the TIF and the land, things like that, but, you know, once again, I didn't think it would be a debate to this level. So my bad, as much as Johnson, you know, these developers call, I could tell you 10 phone calls I had today and you just shake your head because none of them had anything to do with my job. One, I got four calls on bedbugs and I don't know what I'm supposed to do about that, but I'm supposed to make them illegal aliens in Little Falls or what? But so I
Did you say bedbugs?
Yes. So, point taken.
And I would also imagine that there's some confidentiality while people are exploring things and what's available in town that unfortunately we just can't know right away until people decide whether they want to go forward or not.
Well, I didn't know we wanted to shop that parcel of land around. I just, it was sitting up there empty as city land.
Well, and I think that's the other thing, you know, we don't actively go out and seek developers. They come to us with a project, they need to have their their project plan in place. I mean, it's not up to us to develop the project for them. We don't go out and seek developers for different things. They come to us, if they have a plan, if they have money, if they, you know, have financing, they have, you know, a decent plan in place, you know, we work with them. But it's, it's, we don't develop the project for them. And we've had other people that have looked at that parcel of land and, you know, they've looked at it, decided that it wasn't going to work for them.
Well, somebody must have had an idea that they wanted to put something there if other people have looked at it. I didn't know anything about it.
We, the typical approach for a developer is they they come to us saying that they they have an idea for a project and they're, they're wondering where in the city that it it might work. So we, we listen to them, you know, Carol, you're on, you could chime into this, you've been a part of a lot, so many of these. But we listen to them, we go and then we show them various parcels within the city that it might work. Some of them are city-owned, some of them are private and that's why Carol's generally part of this conversation because she can, she can help them, guide them to that. So we want, we want people to come in with development and projects and ideas and we show them parcels like this. Lori and I stood on that property with two other housing developers and showed them, this is a project, this is a place that we've done housing before, see River Rock Town Homes right next door. This is a parcel that we've done projects with before and housing projects.
So when you and Lori stood with two other developers on that property, it would have been really nice in your report to say this week Lori and I stood on this piece of property with two developers who might be interested in doing something here. Then we've got a little bit of a heads up.
And Raquel, those took place in 2018 and 2016, I believe, in terms of when that happened. So prior to my my update, and I will do my best to continue to keep you informed of when opportunities are coming to the table. But we, we try to then take those ideas and vet them as to are they actually going to work? And we ask them questions that are details that you hopefully want to want those answers there. And when they don't come back to us and don't even try to further modify or develop their plans, then we usually assume they don't want to do the project because they're not going to, they're, they were just looking for something that we couldn't give them.
And I don't, I don't want this to get into a finger pointing session because I'm not going to play that. I just want things explained to me in a reasonable terms so when I'm asked a question by these people at Little Falls, I can give them an answer. I'm not going to sit and tell the people when they ask me a question, well, I don't know, you'll have to ask this person or you'll have to ask that person. I want the questions answered so I can answer them.
And I wanted to do the same thing, James, and that's why I called Lori because I had questions that people asked me and so I sent her a little list with a couple of questions, but we better wait with those, Mr. President, or we're not going to get through our agenda planning. We can talk about them at our, in our regular agenda if everybody's all right with that and otherwise we're not going to get to that.
Eleven after already.
Can I, can I just ask, just for the audio for anybody listening, and if you can try to make sure that you're speaking to the mics, I think that helps with the pickup.
Sorry.
New business prospect, chief hole in the day industrial park discussion. Lori and John.
And this is where we have Carol on as well. So I think I would like Carol to to speak here.
Okay, well, what I'm doing here tonight, I'm here because this is the first meeting since this project got going. And I'm going to start out, this is just a heads up for you so that I'm going to explain what's coming in the in the future. I'm going to start first with some of you went and did a tour of Barrett Pet Food Innovation last week. We had the whole district, county board and city council and my board in right here. We would have liked to have done that last summer, but because of COVID, we really couldn't get there. But this was a $22 million project. I think they had said in the beginning they were going to employ about 35 to 40 people there within two years. They're at 100 right now. Their average wage is $17.56 an hour. Company-wise with their other facility north of here, they have 254 people. They play for the employee health benefits. They can add dependents if they want. They have dental, vision, long and short-term disability. They have a 501K that they match at 4%. Those of you that went through, you heard that they are at capacity at their new facility. That's coming about one to two years before they thought they would be at capacity. And what has happened, why that happened, was with everybody being at home during COVID, they all decided they wanted pets, dogs and cats and whatever, and that's their main market. And because of that, their business has just exploded. As we were walking through the plant, when they built it, they put everything in so that they could add a second line. And with that, Sarah asked me if I could help find some funding so that they can add the second line already. They have three shifts, two are going right now. They had a bottleneck in packaging, so their third shift people are actually there doing packaging. They have over, I think, a million pounds of pet food sitting in those clothes waiting to be packaged. They've already bought two machine lines there to help with that packaging. So that's one thing, I'm going to be working with them on adding the funding for their second line. Now what has happened, they had a company that they have been dealing with, they add flour to their meat and then they more or less bake it and it makes the tinkle. So they have to add flour. They add different types of flour. It's just not wheat flour, it's oat flour, it's curds. They're getting into a lot of engine grains and they're making it in flour. Well, who mills that flour and is an expert in is a company out of Fargo called Anchor Ingredients. They wanted to do business more in a, in a joint venture type of way with Barrett for several years now. And what's come about now is they have decided that they, they just two weeks ago signed all the paperwork to start a company called Norris Freeze Dry, brand new company. And they started that company to build a freeze-dried pet food company. They met with the builder on Friday. They're looking at about 75,000 square feet now and they're, they want to position it so that they can expand some more. This is going to be between a 15 and a 20 million dollar project with 40 jobs. So because of everything that's going on with Barrett's second expansion, they're going to need assistance to make this project go and it's not going to be able to go forward unless we can provide some assistance. What kind of assistance? Well, land, like we did with them before. They're zeroing in on two sites near them. They have one right now that they kind of prefer, but they will make a decision within the next week to 10 days for sure which location they want. We talked to the state of Minnesota, one gentleman from the state was there when we did the tour and he talked about the job creation fund, which they utilize state funding to help hire people and pay for training. And that needs a, just an approval, a public hearing and approval from the council. We did the Minnesota Investment Fund, a forgivable loan on their other project. They would be eligible for a loan from this company. That again requires a public hearing. TIF, if we do TIF, obviously you know that it needs a public hearing. So what I'm doing tonight is to give you a heads up that we would come to you on April 5th and ask you to call for some public hearings so that we can get this project going. They would like to be in the ground with this project late spring, first part of summer. They don't want to do their winter construction like they ended up doing with their other project. So that's, that's what I'm here to explain to you tonight. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask them.
Any questions?
I think that this is a project that is, could be, you know, right a little false here. And we have more businesses wanting to come, build facilities, employ our people. I think Sarah, there've been almost all the people working in that plant are citizens of the city of Little Falls.
Carol, do you have any more detail, in-depth detail on on this other project with Freeze Dry?
Not yet. I mean, the company was just formed two weeks ago. They are looking and talking to the equipment suppliers. That's determining, you know, how big of a building they're going to have. You know, I'm coming to you now so that you know, I don't have all the answers to all the questions yet because the building's still being designed. The equipment is still being looked at at how much. So I'm just coming to you to give you a heads up, hopefully by April 5th. If that's when we have a public hearing, Sarah will be there, the owner, and we'll have more information for you.
Just one other quick question, is any of this going to be in direct competition with Anderson's processing at all?
No.
Okay.
This is a freeze-dried pet food company. They will be taking in meat that is semi-frozen and they're going to be chopping it up into smaller pieces and freeze drying it. Has nothing to do with the process that Anderson has come processing.
Oh, I just heard you say some stuff about flour and I didn't know if that was going to be anything related to Anderson's or not.
No, the company that they are partnering with is a company that makes flour. And Barrett's already put in their own, they put in a flour mill in their care facility to just make flour for their own product.
And I think they said that that freeze-dried pet food would typically cost around $300 for And I think they said that, that freeze dried pet food would typically cost around $300 for five pounds?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five? Twelve pound? Yeah. But she did say 100 pounds of meat becomes 20 pounds of product.
Jim, you didn't get a chance to take the tour?
Uh, I'm sorry. I was up on Lakewood Woods fishing when they did that.
Yeah, it was pretty good. It was pretty good. That's when this came out. See, this is something, I know how it started.
Yeah.
Me too.
Thank you, Carol.
Any other questions for Carol?
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you. We'll see you on the ship.
Golf course. John.
Council President, on our agenda for the regular meeting, um, we're receiving the resignation letter from our golf course manager. Um, you know, in typical fashion with employees, if they're, you know, resigning, we're usually coming at that same meeting asking for posting and advertising for their position to replace that. At this time, uh, understanding the challenges that we're, we've been having at our golf course and this point in the year, I am not recommending that we, we take that immediate step to, to, to do that work. Um, that we, it just give us some time to at least assess and figure out where it is that we are operating our course, how we are operating our course, if there's other alternatives and things that we can look at. You know, there's a long history here of different ways that the clubhouse has been run, either leased out or, you know, city employee, um, employed by city employees. There's a wide variety of those different resources out there in, in the, in the space. So I just really feel it was in, it's, it warrants us to be able to look and explore what that, that operation is going to look like for us, uh, moving forward. That said, I, I believe we have some really, we've done some good things having staff. We have some staff that we know are coming back to the course. And I believe at least in the, you know, in the near, the short term and possibly for the season, that those existing staff and the ones that we posted recently, um, and can hire, we can, we can make it through this, this season to, you know, make those assessments and analyze how, what the next steps are, next way that we're going to operate the golf course.
Thank you. Any other items?
Council President, I have, um, two petitions here that were given to me by somebody who lives on Third Street today. She asked if I would read them, um, and I don't know if I should read them now or if I should wait and read them during constituent complaint part of the meeting, or if I should just turn them in. I know that the council has to expect a petition, but she did ask that I read them under constituent complaint. So I know we only have five minutes left.
Yep.
So should I read them now or should I read them later at the regular meeting?
Will you be through them in five minutes?
I think so.
Go ahead. I'll let you know if we get close.
Dear council members, regarding public improvement number 389, affected property owners on Third Street. Does my mic down? There. Regarding public improvement number 389, affected property owners on Third Street Southeast request a cost benefit analysis concerning any tree removal you may determine necessary in order to complete this improvement. We request that the city of Little Falls take into consideration the impact of the tree loss and the subsequent additional stormwater runoff and its impact on the river. What is the city planning to put in place of the removed trees? Are you installing rain gardens, which would filter the water before it's discharged into the river? Trees reduce air pollution, noise pollution, water pollution, and provide habitat for birds and animals in addition to shade and beautifying the street. Washington DC did a study on tree cover and the trees' ability to absorb rainfall. The outcome of the study was that if enough trees were planted along roads where needed, the city would need one less underground water tunnel, saving taxpayers a lot of money. The trees on Third Street would not have as great an impact, but this points out the benefits of trees. If trees are diseased or having a major impact on the sewer system in some areas, removal may be required, but we request that those healthy trees providing our shade pollution control and absorption of rainfall, which helps prevent stormwater runoff, would not be removed and that you weigh the benefit of these trees against any impact on infrastructure. And then there's a whole bunch of signatures from residents on Third Street. The other one is also from Third Street residents. Dear council members, with regard to public improvement number 389, we, the residents of above name location hereby submit the following petition. That interest rate for residents' portion of assessments be lowered as, as such available from lending institutions. Currently 2.5 with projected 2021 increase to 2.9%. With this option for property owners, the city loses the interest it could gain. Kindly also consider the broad impact COVID-19 pandemic restrictions have had on income capabilities of citizens. In summary, the undersigned residents propose a reduction on total amount due for assessments based on the two points above and listed again below. City interest rate higher than lending institutions, economic hardship imposed by pandemic mandates. We are open to hearing any other proposals the council may present for reducing the cost burden. Respectfully submitted, and then a bunch of signatures.
Wasn't that, you get part of the public hearing?
It was. They probably should have been submitted before the public hearing, but now that we have a petition with a bunch of names after it's already been ordered in. And I, you know, I live on Third Street, so I don't really want to comment on what I think we should do regarding interest rates, but.
I see it's 7:28. We'll adjourn this meeting until our regular meeting at 7:30.
I viruses.
Are we ready, John? It is 7:30. We will call our March 15th, 2021 Little Falls Regular City Council Meeting to order. Uh, let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That is much nicer than doing it over Zoom.
Sounds like a foreign language.
Council President, quickly before, uh, Mr. Liljegren is in attendance via Zoom.
Okay. So we are all present. Um, because we have a couple of people that are remote, we still need to do all our votes by roll call, I take it? All right. Um, all individuals are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law and herein place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, before, uh, we do that, could we please pull the proclamation again? The students are not available this evening and.
Okay, so.
They have that nice article on the record and they're really excited about the opportunity to read it, so.
So we'll remove item following?
Yes, and, um, did we add anything on the, uh, heritage preservation?
We have not yet. I was hoping we'd get a chance in the work session, so, um, there was a request, um, in Idaho, I, we sent it out late this afternoon. There was a request, um, to appeal a decision made by the Heritage Preservation Commission for a sign. Um, is that something the council would entertain adding to the agenda tonight? I would be.
I would. I didn't get a chance to read it. It was a little hectic at work today.
Okay, then I'd approve the agenda with the proclamation taken off and HBC signage added, please.
Was that Wayne?
Gary.
Barry.
Motion by, by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Canofla. Uh, roll call, please.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes. Approval of the minutes, the special work session meeting of March 1st, 2021, and the regular meeting of March 1st, 2021. Approve. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Looking.
Motion by Councilmember Liljegren, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yeah.
Carries.
Approval of the bills, checks 104371 through 104446, totaling $805,411.79. Approve. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Starley. Call a roll, please.
Uh, can I, I, I was going to bring this up and I forgot what it was. Uh, I have one question. What's, what's this on a couple of deals that says further?
That's the name of a company that we, um, does our healthcare savings plan, um, wellness programs, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Um, Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yeah.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Carries.
Next will be a presentation, 2020 Annual Fire Report. Chief Seeland.
Thank you, Council President, Mayor Zilka, and members of the council. Honored to be here tonight to, uh, speak to you about the Little Falls Fire Department 2020 Annual Report. We had a lot of changes in 2020 with retirements, promotions, and new hires. Um, of course, Chief Neiman and retired, and we had an assistant chief retire as well. So we had to promote some people to replace them, as you all know. Uh, so it was a fairly busy year also. We went, uh, with 169 calls up from 148 in 2019. Of course, we had to deal with, uh, COVID, as we all have also. So we had to adapt during that, uh, with training and responding to calls. The firefighters persevered through it, of course, and, and they did a great job. And we're starting to get back to a little bit more of the norm again. So as you scroll through the report, the calls are broken down, uh, by township and by city. And then toward the end of the reports, again, they're, they're broke down call by call. Um, I know you guys have a lot on your agenda tonight, so I'm not going to go through all of the little details. Um, I'll hit on a couple of things as far as education and fire prevention. It was, it was tough to get out and do some of that, and we didn't have as many requests, frankly, just because of COVID. But when we did, we got out, did it as best we could, uh, with distancing and doing it outside. Um, again, with events, a similar thing. Training, we tried to adapt and do more, but outside for about two months, we had to switch to online training back in April and May of last year. But once things loosened up a little bit, we, we started back up and did distancing as best we could, splitting the department into smaller groups. Uh, as far as the calls go, uh, with those, the spreadsheets towards the end, do you guys have any questions with any of that? Again, they're broken down by township, um, and by the city. We had 116 calls in the city, and then I think the township was the most, the Little Falls Township with 20 calls, I believe. And some of the numbers on the reporting are also not completely accurate because, uh, Chief Neiman used a different system. So it didn't show the personnel necessarily with the, with the report that sent to the state. So with the new reporting that we're using next year, it'll, it'll be a little more accurate than how it shows on there as far as personnel will. I'd just like to take a moment to thank all of the firefighters. This is just basically a snapshot of all the hard work they do. They're a great group of, of, uh, folks to work with, to work alongside. Um, I'm honored to, to be here working with them. And I want to thank all of you for your support throughout the year, the townships. You know, we try and provide them with service, uh, good service. We met with them this past fall. They all renewed their contract with us. Uh, so we're honored to be able to serve them as well. That's basically all I have. I want to see if you guys have some questions.
Mr. President.
That's a big question for what you do, Greg. You're welcome.
Yeah, Craig, I'd like, uh, say thank you to you and, and to all our firefighters for the good work they do. I've talked to some of the firefighter, your subordinates, and, uh, they really appreciate the work that you're putting into this, your, your chief's job. So, uh, thank you to, to all our firefighters.
Thank you.
I would echo that, Craig. Great job.
Hey, Craig, uh, I noticed there's a couple people retiring. Uh, do you have people lined up to take their places, or do you have to go out and hire?
Yeah, so on the agenda later tonight, we have a couple of retirements. Those were pretty much planned, uh, when Chief Neiman hired the nine firefighters last year, just before he left. So those were, those were planned at that time. So at this point, I don't think we need to, to open it up for hiring. If we have a couple more in the next year, we may have to come back and, and get hired again.
Thank you. What is the wish of the council?
I make motion to present, uh, Chief Seeland's presentation for the 2020 Annual Fire Report.
Second.
Sorry, I'm not sure who that was.
Hanson.
I was trying to listen online to my computer. I'll go, oh, it's over here. Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Hanson, receive the fire report. Call a roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yeah.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries.
Consent agenda, animal control report, February 2021 received. Application for exempt commitment, Greater Minnesota Two-Cylinder Club Raffle, June 23rd, 2021 approved. Point London Tractor, Seasmo Cook Golf Course, approved. Building report, January and February 2021 received. Fire report, February 2021 received. Morrison County Attorney's Prosecution Report, January and February 2021 received. Lighting Commission Minutes, March 2021 received. Police Report, February 2021 received. Recycling Report, December 2020 and year end 2020 received. Waste Water Report, February 2021 received. Water Report, February 2021 received. What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I move that we approve and receive the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Goschek. Call a roll, please.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yeah.
Liljegren?
Yeah.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
Public hearings and lettings. Uh, public hearings, resolution 2021 dash 33, grant consent to expenditure of bonds proceeds. City of Pierce, Horizon Health Incorporated, adopt, Lori.
Yes, we have, um, before us tonight, the resolution, um, approving the use of tax exempt bonds by Horizon Health for a facility here in Little Falls. Um, the City of Pierce will actually be issuing those bonds. Um, and then they will be spending some of those dollars here in Little Falls. Therefore, the city needs to approve the resolution as well. There's no obligation, um, of the city to repay or pay back any of the bonds. It's just a requirement that we approve the use of the money here in the city.
We just passing the resolution or are we having a public hearing for that?
Yes, public hearing.
Public hearing. So, 7:43? Open a public hearing? Do we have anyone online that wants to speak about that?
So we, Council President, we do have, uh, four people that are in attendance. I know one has, was indicated that they're for the sidewalk project, but I don't know if the others are for this public hearing.
Okay.
I would not suspect they are, but I just sent a message in the chat to use the raise hand feature if you are interested in this public hearing.
Just a little moment, see if anybody raises their hand.
Doesn't appear so, and I, although I did just get a, oh, wait, oh, there's one, okay. Chris?
Yes?
Yes.
Here for the sidewalk.
Okay. Okay, I think we, the attendees on, on the call are, or Zoom are here for the sidewalk, public hearing.
Then we will close our public hearing for the resolution two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-three for Horizon Health at seven forty-five. What is the wish of the council?
Council President, I-
I'll second.
Second.
Sorry, we can't.
Okay.
Second by Councilmember Storey, any discussion? Call and roll, please.
Storey?
Yes.
Johansson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canacala?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-four, order and surface improvements, sidewalks, public improvement, PIR, adopt. Greg, are you there?
Evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Council President John, if I could share my screen here, I'll watch the public hearing presentation real quick. Can everyone see that?
Yes, we can see that.
Okay. So, this evening, we are talking about 2021 sidewalk improvements, if you recall, I'll lay back up. We do have that data publication as well as the notes mainly sent out through the joint property owners. If you recall, we do this, we try to do this on an annual basis, every year we try to do about a third of the town every year. This is recommended from the league Minnesota cities to make sure that our sidewalks meet current ADA standards, doesn't have any tripping hazards or anything like that. In the past, in 2019, we did not do the sidewalk project because we had such a large downtown project with the Trump Avenue twenty-seven. And then in 2020, we, again, didn't do it, COVID came around and it threw everything kind of up in the air. So, we haven't been able to do this for the last couple of years, so we're starting to get back into the routine again to do these, to these sidewalk projects. So, the area that we're talking about is the downtown as well as the east side of town, along with any compliance-driven location. This is a staff-initiated project, as I mentioned, this is something that the league recommends, we go out and identify the sidewalk areas that could be potentially tripping hazards and don't meet the ADA requirement. So, we did review the area, we just identified potential tripping hazards, and to give you an idea of what constitutes a tripping hazard, it's only a quarter inch left. So, a quarter inch up-down gap constitutes a tripping hazard that doesn't meet the ADA standard. Some of you have seen these before, all beyond, these are not from this year's project, simply because you can look at the green grass inside, and we don't have that yet. But to give you an idea to show that this type of lift, this is a tripping hazard, the next one here where there's holes in the sidewalk, that would be a project area that we're looking at. The next two slides are ones that are not considered tripping hazard. So, the photo on the bottom left, that is a cracked sidewalk, obviously we'd like to have it replaced, but it would not qualify under this product because of the tight gap, it's not up, it's not down, it's not separated. So, that would not qualify underneath our, our project or get tagged underneath our project. And same with the ones on the bottom right, you see the weeds growing in the cracks, but again, there's not a tripping hazard or a gap in there where somebody would get hurt. So, looking at the, the project itself, we're looking at about six hundred square feet of sidewalk replacement, fifty feet of sidewalk grinding, where one panel is up higher than the other, and we feel that we'd be able to just grind it off to get it back flush. And then site restoration, wherever we do remove those panels or remove or replace. Now, we do have an alternate in the, in the proposal to do what's called concrete grazing, so they can pressure ground underneath the sidewalk, break it up so that it's level with the adjoining sidewalk. And that would be in lieu of grinding it in this case. So, that is an alternate, we'll see which one comes less expensive when we bid it, but those are the two options that we're currently pursuing. Looking at the opinion of probable costs, construction, we're looking at ten thousand six hundred ninety dollars, contingency at a thousand fifty-nine. Engineering at four thousand dollars, for total project cost, twelve thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars. Looking at the funding, that's under about eighty-three percent, with the city picking up seventeen percent mainly on city portion of the, of this area, so sidewalks, that type of thing. Assessment rates, now our current policy says that sidewalk replacement and maintenance is a hundred percent responsibility of the body of property owners. So, that's why we did send out those ones to civil property owners where the, where the areas where the sidewalk is either cracked, lifted up, smarter than the current, current ADA standards. Our preliminary estimate is thirteen dollars ninety cents per foot for replacement, that does include the restoration. Grinding would be at sixteen dollars ninety-five cents, and then patching at two hundred dollars per foot. Now, all of these can fluctuate depending on bid prices, we, as we said, have not bid the project yet, and so we'd be looking at obtaining bids probably about a month here if this moves forward, to see where everything actually follows. The project would be assessed at four percent over five years, is what we're projecting right now. We do give homeowners the opportunity to repair it themselves, or if they wanted to hire their own contractor, they definitely can do that, we just ask that they pull a permit, again, there's no cost for that. And that would be completed before June one of 2021. At that point, we would ask that our contractor begin work after the June one timeline, so that we can get it done in the construction season and not impact, you know, a lot of activities, whether it be yards of craft fair or school, and so that's kind of what we're, what we're looking at. So, it's much like all of our other assessment projects, through the four twenty-nine, drop to four twenty-nine process, we do have an option for deferment, if property owners are sixty-five years of age or older, they may qualify for deferment if there's certain end contras that they meet. Or if they're in the Minnesota National Guard, military numbers that are ordered to act military service through that state statute. But where do we go from here? Currently, I would be tonight, March fifteenth, the public hearing. If this moves forward, we would move with the final design on the project in the month of March, look for advertising for bids in April, or the contract in May, and the construction will be June and July of this year. With the final assessment hearing scheduled for September or October of this year, and again, construction will be completed in August of 2021. Any questions from the council?
We'll open our public hearing at seven fifty-two, and go ahead with whoever will be up first.
All right. Chris?
Do need you to state your name and address, please, when you begin.
Chris, you have the floor.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you, my name is Christine Kalesh, address is four one four First Street Northeast.
Go ahead with what you'd like to say.
I'm just curious to know, like, the cost and what is, is it just, because I just got a somewhat kind of a bill, I'm just curious to know how much it's gonna be, so we can budget it, or if it's just gonna go on my homeowners, or what is the cost of it?
If I may, Council President, I can, I can answer that.
Thank you.
So, in the notice that you were, that you were sent, it did indicate what the preliminary estimate would be of the assessment. So, at the very bottom, there should be a total in terms of how much that would be. Now, like I mentioned, once we actually bid the project, we'll have better handle on what the actual costs are going to be through their estimate at this point in time. And then in September, when the final project is, is done and you have the final numbers, we'll be able to give exact dollar amounts for that. If you decide to pay some of it or all of it, then obviously that number would get reduced. If you would like not to pay any of it, then it would just go on the taxes, and it'd be budgeted over five years of that four percent.
Okay, but you're gonna send a bill, like, so I can have an option to pay it, or have it go on my homeowners?
So, we would send a notice in the September timeframe, that's indicating what the total amount would be, similar to what you will receive there, and then they would invite you to do the final assessment hearing, much like this one did this year.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
All right, so Dan Gilder? You can unmute your mic, you can speak to the public hearing.
Can you hear me, this is Dan Gilder, sir?
Yes, we can.
Good job. Oh, uh, I originally had an issue with the cities, and definitely working really good with me, with utility in that area, and so I just want to put down that I don't have any objection to the project itself.
Thank you.
Need his address.
We didn't get your whole address, could you repeat that, please?
Uh, five, yeah, five ten Albee Sixth Street.
Thank you. Sorry, we had a moment of feedback there, was there anything else you'd like to tell us?
About that one, yes.
Thank you for your time.
Dennis Lind?
I'm here.
All right, Dennis.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Go ahead, Dennis, could we get your address, please?
Do you have, say that again, please, I didn't have my tongue up enough.
Go ahead and start, but we do need your address for the record, please.
My address is ninety-six ninety-seven Hilton Road, Gold Hall.
Mr. President, I believe Dennis is here for, and I am further down on the, on the agenda.
I'm sorry, that's right, I did know that, okay, is that Ron as well, Greg?
Yes, that's correct.
Sorry, Dennis, we'll, we'll promote, I'll promote you to a panelist and Ron as well, that would be all the people for the public hearing.
All right. And no letters, I take it? So, we'll close our public hearing at seven fifty-seven. Well, what is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-four.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Lundberg, any discussion? Call and roll, please.
Johansson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canacala?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Carries.
I'm not sure your microphone's on. Okay, I just wasn't hearing you very much. Lettings, Portable Generator, Total Energy Systems LLC, wastewater award, Greg.
Thank you. The next item that we've got for you is an additional portable generators for the wastewater treatment facility. Currently, we have nineteen lift stations throughout town that move the wastewater from our collection system all the way down to our wastewater treatment plant. Two of our main lift stations currently have standby generators, so we're not half concerned when the, when the power goes out, while those two are giving the sewage to the, to the facility. But that leaves seventeen other lift stations that we, we need to take care of. Apparently, we do have one portable generator that we, that we purchased last year for the waste facility. We do have another one that kind of uses dual purpose, also, it also runs the water plant, and so depending on where it's needed and where that, where that generator will go. We would like to purchase a second generator for the wastewater facility, just to make sure that we've got enough generators around in the event of a power outage to cover all those, all those needs. We did budget it this year, and identical to the one that we, we have down there, and so we are asking the council to go ahead and authorize that to purchase the generator from Total Energy Systems in the amount of thirty-three thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars and ten cents. This is off of the Starwell-Wopper harvesting agreement, so if this is budgeted, that would be charged to the wastewater improvement fund.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Storey, any discussion? Call and roll, please.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canacala?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Johansson?
Yes.
Carries.
Turnout gear, Jefferson Fire and Safety, chief.
Thank you. Before you, the request to purchase firefighter turnout gear for the remaining firefighters, several of them were outfitted with turnout gear from recently retired firefighters, but we have four left that need gear, and then a few odds and ends also. We have same quotations from Jefferson Fire and Safety and Hyman Fire. Jefferson Fire and Safety came back at eleven thousand nine thirty-eight seventy, and Hyman Fire at thirteen thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars, eight hundred and sixty-five cents, sorry. We would recommend going with Jefferson Fire and Safety, and that would be charged to the fire equipment fund. Also, to go along with that, we received a grant from the DNR last year in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars, so we would use that also as part of the-
What is the wish of the council?
Make a motion to award the turnout gear.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Councilmember Liljegren, any discussion? Call and roll, please.
Canacala?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Johansson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Carries.
Old Business, resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-two, call for public hearing on tax increment financing proposed housing community asset development group failed three-one-twenty-one, reconsider, Councilmember Goschek.
Council President?
Yep.
We do have Jason Murray on with us, he did inform me that the earliest, that the public, the resolution would have to be amended to include the date of the public hearing. The soonest that we'd be able to set that public hearing would be May seventeenth. Would request that the adoption of the resolution include that amendment of that date.
That date? So, does that need to come as a motion from you? Is that how?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is a second? Is there any discussion?
What we're voting on here now is just to open it up for a public hearing on May seventeenth, is that when you're proposing the public hearing to be?
Correct, that would be the soonest date based on the meeting notification requirements of the state for the taxing jurisdictions that we would be able to hold the public hearing.
And at that time, the terms and conditions of the TIF agreement will be disclosed at that time?
They-
Or before?
Or before.
Council President, do all of the votes stay the same as they were last time, and only Frank's vote changes, or do we vote again? We vote again.
Yes.
I'm sorry, who seconded that motion, I had-
Councilmember Storey.
Storey, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President, I would just add that I have not heard a negative comment on this project from any residents, and that was kind of my point of the numerous phone calls and emails I receive. I saw one in the- emails I receive. I saw one in the record, and I saw one on Facebook. Those are the only two negatives I've heard. I've heard from school board members about the possibility of more students coming in. I've heard from numerous downtown people, and some people that have invested in our downtown, so I would just ask you to please talk to some people other than on Facebook, or in your neighborhood, or whatever, and I know we all represent, I shouldn't say all, most of us represent wards, but please, this is, I believe this is extremely important to our community and our growth, and so please do your research, and I'm sure we'll have a lot of people that will be interested in public comment.
And I think our businesses from Sarah's comment during our tour would appreciate it. You brought up Facebook. I screenshotted something, I'd be more than happy to share, but it was someone who was trying to find an apartment, couldn't even get to put on a waitlist because their list was so long. Any other discussion? Call and roll, please.
Lildegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
No.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canacala?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash thirty. Order feasibility report, surface and/or utility improvements, Fourteenth Street Southeast. Consider. Greg?
Good evening. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty is to order a feasibility report for the project referenced previously here, and so we'd be roughly looking at about six-hundred-and-sixty foot dungeon of Fourteenth Street that would include utilities and stress as well. Looking at the project cost, we'd be looking at about one hundred and thirty, excuse me, four-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eleven cents, and we would anticipate roughly half of that to be assessed out. So if we move forward with this, then it would be ordering a feasibility report, and then our next resolution would be to accept the feasibility report and call for the public hearing.
What is the wish of the council?
Yes.
Who? Sorry? I thought I heard yes, but I don't know who that was.
I'd make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Canacala. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President. I have one question. So if that agreement with the Community Asset Development Group falls through and it doesn't happen, is this road still going to be built, or, because this is one thing that I was also concerned about with that project, was part of this money is going to be assessed to the people that have nothing really to do with that apartment building. And are we, if it does go through, will they only be assessed that money if they hook up to those resources, or are they going to get assessed that amount of money regardless?
Council President?
Go ahead.
The city owns the other side of that property, so there are, the only assessments will be to the developer, the new developer. The city owns the opposite side of that property.
And then I believe once someone would, if someone would be interested in the other side of the road, then they would pay assessments when they would hook up?
Correct. Council President, isn't it a little premature to order a feasibility report on something that has not been approved yet by the council?
Well, the report is already done. Look at the next line on the agenda.
Oh.
I believe it so that we can set a date for a public hearing, so that if we would go ahead, we would have a public hearing. If we wouldn't, we're not building a road for nothing.
Okay.
So it doesn't hold up the project if it would go ahead.
Mr. President, you are correct. And so this item certainly orders in the feasibility report, as Councilmember Hanson indicated. The feasibility report is actually done. The next item calls for that public hearing. You'll notice on the resolution that it does have the incorrect date on that. We would be looking at April nineteenth as the public hearing for the street. I know that's different than the public hearing for the tip, and the reason being for that is once we move forward with the project, we still have to go out and get help, we also have to get some design complete done, and then there's also three weeks, basically a month, because we only have three, first and third Monday of the month, to get bids on the project. And so we wouldn't build a road without having a developer in mind, or at least in the work here to do something, and all of those steps, the council will still need to approve those actions. So by doing these, there's still opportunity for the council to stop the project in the event that, you know, we did not move forward with the housing or the streets.
Any other discussion?
I guess, Mr. President, we're going to hold a hearing on a project that nobody's going to be affected with, from what I'm understanding. I guess I don't understand why that, why that time would be taken up if there's no effect on anybody at the current time.
Council President, that would be to align with the statutory process for, to be able to put assessments onto the project. We do have requirements to host public, to publish that we're having a notice of a public hearing, and then holding the public hearing in order for us to follow through with the assessment process. So if there were ever anybody in the future that we wish to, on the other side of the development, to attach the assessment to, we would have to have proven that we followed the statutory process in order to apply that assessment.
Call and roll, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canacala?
Yes.
Lildegren?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-one. Accept feasibility report and call for public hearing. Surface and/or utility improvements. Consider.
Mr. President, I would make one note that we'd like to adjust the hearing date to April nineteenth. I think it says the...
March fifteenth.
...in the, in the bag. So the nineteenth should be the correct date.
What is the wish of the council?
A motion to accept the feasibility, is that the one we're on, accepting the feasibility report?
Two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-one, yes.
Yeah, twenty, I, I'll make the motion to consider and adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Storley, second by Councilmember Canacala. Any discussion? Call and roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canacala?
Yes.
Lildegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries.
New Business. Accept recommendations of interview committees. Number one, appoint Sheila Storzinger, accounting technician. Accept and appoint. Lori?
Yes, Council President, and members of the council. We posted the position for the accounting tech, had several applications. We did phone interviews with seven of the applicants and five in-person interviews. Interviews were done by myself, the city administrator, and the HR director, with members of the support staff interviewing those candidates as well. We have a unanimous recommendation to hire Sheila Storzinger as the accounting technician.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to accept and appoint Sheila Storzinger as accounting technician.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Storley, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? Call and roll, please.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canacala?
Yes.
Lundberg, or Lildegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
Appoint Daniel Owens, full-time patrol officer. Accept and appoint. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. President, and members of the council. Frank, I'd be asking for authorization to fill a vacant patrol officer position. As you may recall, with ten copies with the morning after the end of the month. The position was first posted internally. There were no candidates, the five part-time staff were posted in public. There were several applicants. The first round of interviews was conducted by Sergeant Hagna and the HR director. Of those candidates, thirteen were invited back for in-person interviews with Captain Johnson, Sergeant Hagna, and HR director. In those interviews, their recommendation would be that we hired Dan Owens.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the committee recommendation for Daniel Owens, patrol officer.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? Call and roll, please.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canacala?
Yes.
Lildegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Carries.
Appoint William Holman, park maintenance worker. Accept and appoint. Greg?
Good evening. A while back ago, we had a promotion from park maintenance up to equipment operator, and so we did post that position internally. We did not have any internal applicants for the park maintenance, but we did have a number of the applicants for the external, external applicants. We got twelve applications. We interviewed nine individuals for that position. We are looking to appoint William Holman to that position. The interview committee consisted of myself, Peter Blatsky, and Annie Kribb. William Holman will start on March twenty-second, and then he would be at grade three, step one, in accordance with the contract.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll approve.
Motion by Councilmember Canacala, second by Councilmember Lildegren. Any discussion? Call and roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canacala?
Yes.
Lildegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Carries.
Appoint Joseph Sabanya, utility technician. Accept and appoint. Greg?
Thank you. The next position that we're looking at filling is our utility technician. Again, as you recall, we did have a motion within the city, and so we posted that one internally. We have one application, didn't fit the minimum requirements, and so we posted that externally. We did receive thirteen applications for that position. We did interview eleven of those, and then we came up with Joey Sabanya as the top pick for that position. The interview committee consisted of myself, Lori Capilla, Kelly was in there, as well as Oliver Bridges, who previously held the position. And so, again, we're looking at council authorizing or appointing Joey Sabanya to the utility technician. He will start on March twenty-ninth, grade five, step one, in accordance with the union contract.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll move to accept and appoint Joseph Sabanya as a utility technician.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storley, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion? Call and roll, please.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canacala?
Yes.
Lildegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries.
Retirement. Joseph Wucek, firefighter. Receive. Chief?
Thank you. Joe Wucek started with the fire department in March of nineteen ninety-one. He submitted his letter of retirement effective March second, two thousand twenty-one. So you have that before you. I'd like to thank him for his years of service and wish him well in his retirement. He'll be greatly missed.
Yes, a big thank you. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to accept the retirement of Joseph Wucek, firefighter.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Hanson. I'm sorry, I don't remember when we're receiving a resignation. Is that all we need, or do we vote?
Do not need to vote on it.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, but I wasn't positive. Resignation. Matthew Hurt, firefighter. Chief?
Matthew Hurt started in March of, or sorry, February two thousand eight. He recently moved out of the area, and so he submitted his letter of resignation effective March first, two thousand twenty-one. Again, I'd like to thank him for his years of service and dedication to the department. He will also be greatly missed.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll move to accept the resignation of Matthew Hurt.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Storley, second by Councilmember Canacala. Thank you to both of them for their years of service. Resignation. Rich Frye, golf manager. Receive. John?
Thank you, Council President. Rich Frye submitted his letter of resignation. Not a lot of indication in here, but he has agreed with the HR director that to conduct an exit interview, which would further discuss his reasons for going. I do know that he has, he has shared with me that he has accepted a position at another golf course in Minnesota, and would be starting there towards the end of the month. We are already planning on working out some transition in assignments of his duties to other staff.
What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I would make a motion to receive the resignation of Rich Frye. With that motion, I wish him well. I actually talked to him and asked him to rescind his resignation letter, asked him to stay in Little Falls. I think he's done a good job, and I'm sorry to see him go.
Council President?
Yes.
Point of order, you don't actually need a motion to accept, or to rather, to receive the resignation, since it's just receiving it as an information item, but certainly members can take a point personal privilege to wish everyone well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Rich, for your hard work. Petition. Ten-minute parking sign request, one oh six East Broadway. Receive. Greg?
Yes, we did receive a petition for a ten-minute parking sign at one oh six Broadway. Evening. Tonight, we're asking the council to receive the petition, and then in the past, what we've done is we've sent letters out to the adjoining properties within a hundred and fifty feet to see what their input would be on the, on the sign. If the council wishes us to do that again, let us know, and then we can go that course if that's addressed to the council.
So Alyssa, with this, we're receiving it as well? Do we need to do anything, since we're just receiving it?
Are we not, we don't need a motion?
Do we need a motion when this, we're just receiving this?
No.
I think this is, Council President, I think this one is just being received. Is that correct, Greg?
Correct, yeah.
That is correct, yeah.
And it can just be received.
All right, thank you. Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-five. Revoking and redesignating certain municipal state aid streets. Adopt. Greg?
So, thank you. The city has a number of state aid streets throughout the city of Little Falls. With statute reads, we can designate 20% of our roads as state aid streets. John, if you go down two more, there's a map that kind of shows which ones we're removing and which ones we're adding. So what we try to do is we try to keep the roads, the state aid roads, on the busiest traveled roads that are under our jurisdiction, just because of the amount of funds that are redistributed from the state to the cities is based on the amount of traffic. And so obviously, we want to put it on the higher travel roads. Now, when we went through looking at, at our state aid system this year, and I'll be honest, we haven't really looked at it quite some time, but what prompted us to look at it is Sunrise Three, the new development north of town. Obviously, adding roads to, to our system, and so we were looking at, at the length of footages and such, and noticed there was a discrepancy in terms of how many roads that we show on the map in front of you and how many were being reported to us. And so we found out that we had a higher amount that was being reported to the state beforehand. Now, throughout the years I've been here, it's basically take what we did in previous years, put it in here, because we didn't add any streets, but once we added it, we wanted to check everything, and that's where we showed that we were too high on our, on stretch. We reached out to MINTAT to find out what else they would like us to do. They said, well, this has been, has happened in the past in other communities, and so they, they basically do a hard reset. So this year is where we would say this is the actual month that we currently have, and moving forward, that's how we would, we would track it. See, there's a lot more red lines on our map than the dark black and purple, which is a little bit hard to see. That's to get us into compliance. We were about 1.5, I think, 1.5 miles too high on our, on our mileage. And so we took off a number of streets, but then we added two other streets, one being Seventh Avenue Southeast by the hot tub, and the other one being Eighteenth Street Southeast. Currently, that one is a non-traffic road, but as we've talked in the past, we, we do intend to, to construct that road. Now, having it on our state aid system allows us to use those state aid funds. If it's not on our system, we can't use the state aid funds. And so, being that, being that we were going through a provision, we felt it would be a decent time to, to put that on there to give us the ability to, to use those funds in the future if we wanted to. So with that, we would ask the council to approve Resolution 2021-35 that revokes and redesignate certain state aid streets.
What is the wish of the council?
Council President, I move to adopt Resolution 2021-35.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion?
Yes, Eighth Street Northwest from Ninth to Thirteenth, that road's used pretty heavy. You said it was contingent upon how, how much the road was used, but if you live on that street, you see cars flying down there all the time, and they kind of use that to swing over to get the camper up there, too, so.
Yeah, what, and I don't disagree with the council's proposal, but what we have to look at is the, the numbers that MINTAT has on their, their, their map. So they put out with traffic tubes every, I think, four years is when they count them. In the stretch from Ninth Avenue South to Highway 27, that had a pretty good number of vehicles, but from Ninth Avenue going north up to Thirteenth Avenue Northwest and back over to Lumber Drive, that was pretty low. And I don't have the map up in front of me in terms of the numbers, but it was only like 200 vehicles per day in that stretch. And so we do have other roads that were higher than that, and so that's why that one had to come off of the obstacle list, just because of the, the number of vehicles that it had on it.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President, Greg, what effect does that have on that street, if, like a street? Northwest.
How many vehicles?
No, how does that, I'm just saying, how does that affect the road as far as condition and?
It doesn't, doesn't that allow, it just allows us, the ones that are designated as state aid is how we can pull from that pot of money. Otherwise, it doesn't have any, any change to the general public, doesn't have any change from our perspective in terms of maintenance. It's, can we use state aid money for that particular road? So you won't notice any difference other than we can't use the state aid money for that. But that's our set dinner right now.
Thank you.
Which Greg, in essence, would, could push it back for repairs someday. It's like, you know, you're talking about Eighteenth, having state aid money there benefits the project, you know, to put that through, say Ninth or Eighth Street Northwest. Someday, if it gets in disrepair, it might take many years before it does get repaired, like Third South, Southeast, Third Street. So don't you think it would affect it a little bit?
Not really. I mean, it's just another pot of money that we can, we can pull from, and by placing the state aid system on roads that have higher volumes, that allows us to get more money into the, into that pot, because all of the communities that are stated eligible throughout, throughout Minnesota are doing the same thing. They constantly move, move those, those roads. I know the guys were telling me previously that before I was here, they were moving roads all the time. We haven't done it since, since I started in 14, but with that said, I think that the roads that we've got highlighted here are the lower volume, highlighted in red, are the lower volume roads on our system. The ones that are in black and in purple are going to be the ones that are going to be higher in terms of traffic to continue to give us that, it's the most money that we can into that account.
Do you expect Eighteenth Street Southeast to have a high volume someday?
I do.
Call or roll, please.
Canopla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2021-36, large-scale street and sidewalk sale license. West Side Improvement Association. West Little Falls Antique and Collectibles Fair. Adopt. West Side Improvement Association. And he was here, but he had to leave?
No.
That was Gary's here for?
No, he was for the, uh, HPC thing.
What is the wish of the council?
Make motion to adopt Resolution 2021-36.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Carries.
Temporary easement, Independent School District 482 Safe Routes to School Grant. Approve. Greg.
Good evening. So prior to this meeting, I was actually asked the school board to request if they would be willing to give the city of Little Falls a temporary easement on the north 20 feet of the property along Pine Avenue. John, if I may share my screen real quick, I'll show the council down where we're at. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Kind of.
Okay. So as you recall, the Safe Routes to School project consists of a number of different segments throughout the city. The first segment is over on Ninth Street Northeast. We're going from Trump Highway 27 up to Fourth Avenue. We're putting a sidewalk on the east side of the road. Second segment of the project is along Pine Avenue. We're looking at putting a patunus walk on the south side of Pine Avenue. You can see in red, we're going from Riverwood all the way along where it would connect up to the schools, rail system that they've got in their, in the complex. And then on the other side of the rail system that the school has, who would connect up to there, and then continue all the way over to County Road 76, again, on the south side of Pine Avenue. In order to make the favorable connections here, we'd be looking at twenty-foot temporary easement, but it basically doesn't begin for construction, and then after construction is completed, then it would, it would go away. Then a collapsed and collapsed segment that we'd be looking at is over on Sixth Street Southwest. We put it, we'd be installing one block of sidewalk that would be on the east side of Sixth Street Southwest, just south of the Boys and Girls Club. And then we do have three locations where we're putting in rapid rectangular flashing beacons. If you've seen the ones that we have at our current school crossing, they're very slow and kind of lethargic. They don't really grab the driver's attention. These new red flashing beacons, people changes pretty fast, and it kind of catches your eye so that you look up, see what's going on. And the idea is, you know, those are flashing when folks are crossing the crosswalk, and that's what you want to do, is get the attention, make sure that they're aware that something's occurring so that the driver can scoot out or run or stop for those that are crossing. And those three locations are at Ninth Street, 27, over by Lumber School, Fourth Street West, or Fourth Street West and Trump Highway 27 by the Mary Lawrence Middle School, and then Sixth Street West by the Lincoln Elementary School. So the, the school board did approve the temporary easement for this stretch, and so this evening, we're asking the council to, as well, accept and approve that temporary easement from, from the school board.
What is the wish of the council?
Council President, I move to approve the temporary easement with school district.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Carries.
Zoning Administrators Report and Planning Commission Recommendation, Resolution 2021-37, Approval of Conditional Use Denron Properties LLC. Accept and adopt. Greg.
Final, again, of that item that I have this evening, as you mentioned, is a conditional use permit for Denron Properties. At our meeting on the eighth, we had a public hearing for this particular location. I believe we just had the applicants there. We didn't really have anybody from the public indicating anything bad or favor in regards to the, in regards to the application. And so the planning commission is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with four conditions. The four conditions are that they buy by all local, county, state, federal bodies, no outside storage of goods and materials log on site, the existing treaty, which is the vegetation on site being preserved and deemed to provide screening to the residential area, the use of the building stays consistent with the application submitted by the, by applicants to Denron Properties. I should back up just to kind of give you a sense of what is the application. So the whole moon slot, which is over by the senior center, they sent in a request for a vision agreement to convert that from, basically a vacant building right now, used to be cool in that area after the moon slot. What they're looking at, where they potentially have a tenant or a buyer for, for that location, that would be clothing, some clothing, some, a little bit of onsite retail, but mainly internet sales, or online sales, I should say, for, for that clothing. We do embroidery, as far as on the church, for business attire, so trumps for, or hospitals and, and nursing homes and stuff like that. And so that was the basis for, for the findings, was that application and that, that use, and those were the four conditions that the planning commission is recommending this evening for the council. I know the two applicants are online this evening. If you have any specific questions for them, in line, I believe you were there as well, I think, if I, if I happen to mention anything.
I don't think you missed anything.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion or any questions for the?
I was just thinking what kind of condition that building is in. It's been vacated for a while.
I, I can answer some of that for you. They have plans to do some, take a wall down inside to set it up better for their operation, and during the planning commission meeting, Dennis, who I believe is on or was on anyway, mentioned that it is a clear-span steel structure, so it's not falling apart. It's a, it's a sturdy building, and we on the planning commission thought that it would be in the city's best interest to work with them to have it occupied by a tenant and functioning as a business.
Any other discussion? Call or roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries.
Our other item is for the Historic Preservation Commission, but I don't know what it's titled.
It is, Council President?
Yes.
It is an appeal of the Heritage Preservation Commission's denial for signage for Platinum Cosmetics. And I do have that on the share screen.
I've given an email to this afternoon.
Yeah.
So, do you want to take that, Lori?
Sure, sure. So Platinum Cosmetics is interested in, in purchasing the JCPenney Building, the old JCPenney Building. They are going to be, their intent is to open basically a med spa, is what would be in there. The owner of the, or the, the potential owner, the owner of the business, approached the HPC wanting the, the sign that you see, the signage that you see up on the screen there. The intent would be to paint the enamel tiles that are on the building right now, the pink enamel tiles, would be to paint, paint them black and then put the Platinum Cosmetics logo on it. The black is similar to what is on Falls Court and is on the building further to the north, on the corner, the building that's on the corner there. The HPC, in working with SHIPPO, which is the State Historic Preservation Commission, SHIPPO has indicated to the HPC that they feel that those pink tile are historic in nature, and that they should be preserved as they are. The, what we're running into is that if you, and John, I think you can go a few more pictures down, if you've been past that building at all, the tiles are, you can see the Help Systems logo that was on there, the imprint from Help Systems is still on the building. If you look at the tiles themselves, the tiles are stained, whether it's rust, water, whatever it is, they're, they're stained. Don't know what it would take to clean them up, if it's even possible to clean them up. Froggy had indicated that he had tried to remove the Help Systems, the, you know, the signage that, what's stuck on there, when he removed the sign, and he was unable to get it to come off. So SHIPPO, again, is, has indicated that they feel that, that, those pink tile are historic to that building, and the responsibility of the HPC is to ensure the historic integrity of the buildings and, and to keep them as historic in nature as possible.
Lori, if you'd like, I can
Thank you.
speak what Gary Block was here, and he wanted to speak to the council on this. Gary called me this afternoon after the meeting, and what Gary told me is they felt they had to do that based on the recommendation from SHIPPO. He's, and I asked him, I said, well, Gary, if the council would overrule that, would the, would your board be upset with me because I appointed some of you? And Gary told me I could share these things. He said, no, actually, they would be relieved because as residents, they would love to see that fixed up for the appearance. see that fixed up for the appearance, but they felt the need of being on that committee that they, that they needed to support what they were, a letter that they received from SHPO. And I don't know how long that building's been empty, 21 years is what I heard, and if they're investing a significant amount in that building. And, and when I talked to Gary, I said, well, we've been having a hard time filling it, and if this one would fall through, are we, are we going to end up tearing it down? Then it really would be historic. So Gary made it sound like to me that they were in favor of us overruling it, our, our passing something so that, that building could be put in the condition that has been requested by the Maddisons.
So, Council President, you know, just to clarify what is being asked, Susie is looking for funding through the HPC to do the repairs on the roof of the building as well as, I believe this, and it's just the sign request through HPC, correct?
Correct.
So she does have funding that she's asking about, that the HPC has already approved for the roof. Now it's just the permitting of the, changing for the sign of the building. So that, with the HPC following their guidance and recommendations from the SHPO folks, they felt that was their duty to deny that, but the council has the opportunity to overturn that denial and approve the signage and based on, I believe, the first photo.
Mr. President, so if we overrule the HPC's recommendation, is that going to affect any other funding that the, for them to, on the building that, with the roofing and stuff? Are they going to have to go to another source?
No, no.
No, because the funds that even HPC is authorized to use have been local dollars that we've put into that, that funding resource, so.
And there's no repercussion to any other laws or statutes that would, that could come back at us if we?
Based, based on the feedback that the HPC has received from SHPO, from what I heard in the meeting today, that by them denying it originally, they preserved their duty, and that the council has their authorization to overturn that decision, and it does not jeopardize the historic nature, historic classification of this building.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I've worked with that ceramic stuff before. You're not going to get the staining out of it. You can get the, the lettering and stuff off with chemicals and stuff, but what I, what I don't like is painting over it. Painting over ceramics is one of the hardest things where you're going to get that paint to actually adhere to it and last for a long time. I'd almost recommend, if they want to look into it, is maybe covering it up with something black and putting their sign on it. And then someday, if it was to be taken back to its original form, at least it's underneath there, you know? But a better surface to paint on would be ideal than painting right on that ceramic. Ceramic is one of the worst things to paint on, so.
And I, and I know your expertise on that, right, because you do a lot of those things. But Kevin Anderson, I know, is their architect, and I know the HPC really respects him, and I believe that that's what he presented along with them, that they could paint that, correct, Lori?
And they did, the developer has contacted Sherwin-Williams. There, in the information that was provided, there's a letter from Sherwin-Williams as well, indicating, you know, that, that painting that ceramic tile is an option. They would treat it prior to painting it.
Yeah, they'd have to etch it out with acid.
John, do you have a motion written or a suggestion of a motion?
You know, it's, I, our feeling from staff was, we really do want this project to move forward. We want, you know, I think it's in the best interest that we've been working with Susie on this project. She's, she's gone above and beyond what we've, we've worked with her in terms of the development agreement with the EDA. She's gung ho, and I, you know, and it's, it's balancing out the historic nature with, you know, making improvements that are going to better and beautify our downtown. I think it's really where the HPC's struggles have been. This was, as I said, this was earlier today. You know, I think in terms of, if this was a matter of funding the project, I would absolutely recommend that we do that. And I, I just struggle with understanding how the historic preservation works, and one of the other factors to this was the, those tiles themselves, ceramic tiles, weren't original to the building. So they weren't even in the original 30, 1930s timeframe and character. They were put on later in the, either the 50s or the 60s by J.C. Penney as the owner. And, you know, the, as SHPO has indicated or the represent, represented, well, that now draws into the character. So it's, I know HPC struggled of, well, where do we draw the line? How do we manage this as well as others? And to them, I think they felt it was valid that they just, you know, they had to deny it based on their justifications. As far as staff goes, I think it's important that this, this project be able to move forward and, you know, and that the developer that's working on it be able to, you know, beautify the building.
So do.
I was asking for, was if you had wording for a motion. But thank you for your opinion as well.
Well, I think we can just.
Come up with a motion.
Make a motion to overturn the HPC recommendation or overturn.
Authorize the sign permit as requested.
Council President?
Yes, please.
I want to drop the council's attention to the fact that the wording of the ordinance specifically says that the city council may modify or overrule the commission's decision, but only if the project is found to be consistent with the United States Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Preservation Projects or adopted Heritage Preservation Guidelines. Because of that, I would suggest that in making a motion to overrule, if that is what you choose to do, that you make some sort of mention of there being a, that given the context that John had discussed about questions of originality and such like that, that you find that changing it would be within the preservation guidelines.
And that if they don't fix the roof, it's going to be a parking lot pretty soon?
And a spence to remove it.
I'll make a motion, what Alyssa said.
I'll second that, what Alyssa said.
Sorry, Lori. Motion by Mayor Zilka, by Councilmember Goshick. Can you repeat that for us, what she said? What Alyssa said. Is there any discussion?
The motion would be to overrule the Heritage Preservation Committee's, sorry, commission's In this case, because the council believes that doing so would not be inconsistent with Heritage Preservation Guidelines.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's what I thought.
Due to the fact that it was previously changed by Pennies in the 60s and it's not original.
Who would look at that and go, that's historic?
Obviously not original, obviously. It looks awful the way it is.
Call or roll, please.
One second, so we get this.
Oh, sorry. Take all the time you need to write that down.
Okay, Hurcock?
Yes.
Storley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canacola?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries? Thank you very much.
City Council reports on city authorities, boards, bureaus, commissions, and committees. Does anyone have anything?
Yeah, Mr. President, the community services, we had our meeting last Wednesday, and they're going to be starting up now that some of restrictions that are loosened. They're going to be having youth baseball, softball, and there's going to be a few other projects. If you just referenced Morrison County Record with the, with the community services inserts, you'll be see, able to see what, what kind of programs the community service is going to be affording this spring and summer.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any announcements? We're going to be going into a recess, a recess in the court room, evaluating the performance of the community play, resort, and Minnesota Statutes, Section 13B, 2.05, subdivision 3.
Council President, do you intend to bring the council back into session to have a decision or make a motion or anything, or move to adjournment?
They don't know at this point, it depends on everything.
Okay.
But it has to come back into session to close again for the second one.
Correct. But usually if we're not going to take any action, we'll come back into session, just take that down. But I don't know, it depends on the meeting with the council.
Okay. It just goes into, do we have to record that session when we return back in to make that motion? So I'm just asking for clarity, but we will stop the feed, and then you'll indicate to me when.
I'd shut that off, but I'm not sure how we do this, so we can keep the other two council members.
Start it in three minutes.
We will.
And Alyssa Onarkis?
Doing our livestream feed, and then if it does come back, we'll record that session.